Two dash ten for May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two. The work session item next on the agenda is the review of the Charter Review Committee recommendations. Gentlemen, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
If you could state your names and...
Paul Wilber, county attorney.
Mike Dunn, the chair of the Charter Review Committee.
Thank you very much. So when we left off now, Mr. Wilber, you have prepared for us sort of like a revised charter, correct?
Right. What I tried to do was take the whole charter, incorporate the sections that, and the changes that we've agreed on, deletions or additions, and then from our earlier discussions to incorporate, I think it's from roughly the five hundred section on to the back, the possible deletions and changes, but I think that's where we need to go today.
What page?
Well, as of right now, I think we're, if I'm correct, Mrs. Hurley, section four hundred is where we left off?
Four hundred, okay.
Yeah, so if you look at the summary sheet that's in the brief book, that pretty much gives you an idea of the status of each one of the sections that have been discussed, you'll see that section four oh five, which is qualifications of the county executive, council decided to keep that as written.
Okay.
Section four oh seven point C, vacancy in the office of the county executive, council decided to keep that recommendation as written. So you're looking at section four oh eight, which is the removal of the county executive from office, and I do have the suggested change to that section on the screen behind me.
Let me go down to section four oh eight.
All that coughing going on.
So the question was, should there be a censor process and then removal, and then should we include will for violation in the language? And I believe Mr. Wilber has added in the title of section four oh eight, censure or removal of the county executive from office.
Right.
And then he added a letter B that says the county executive may be censured by the county council for actions which are repeated, substantial violations of this charter.
If this is approved, will it have a definition of censure? Because some people get censor and censure.
Yeah, and it's a, really, censure is a term of art in the government world, where it, as I've said, it's a public reprimand.
Right.
From one body to another.
A quick question, this might sound petty, but in part B, when it says the county executive may be censured by the county council, well, part A says you need five members if you're going to, you know, by defer to vote to try to remove them.
If you want that super majority, we could put that.
Should it be the same thing for censorship as well? Should it have to be five members?
I think if you want it that way, we should state that, so it's clear it's not a...
That's what I'm saying.
It's a five, not a four.
It just says by county council.
Right.
It doesn't even say majority.
I think that would be interpreted as...
Yeah, what's...
Four, yeah.
Four, or should we say the super majority?
Well, that's your call, but if you feel it should be five, then I think we should state it's five.
I think just for consistency, I would say, I'd say five.
I'm okay with the five.
Have we already agreed that we want to do this?
What's that?
That we're good with this section to add, to change this?
That's what Paul put together, I think, based on our last work session.
Right.
But it's open for discussion today.
I'm strongly opposed to it. I don't think that we should be removing any elected officials. I think that's what the election is for.
It's not to remove them, though.
To censure them, I mean...
It's a censor, it's not removal.
It's a reprimand.
To publicly reprimand, I mean, but that's like, that's our discretion.
A is, A is removal.
It's removal in...
A is a removal primarily for physical or mental incapacity reasons.
Who are we to judge that?
That's already existing.
That's already existing.
Yeah, A is old language, B would be the new language.
Right.
And if I can, seeing this new language, so thanks for all your work, we did not make this recommendation. The recommendation we kind of put forward was across the board for both the county council within its, should you censure one, some member of the council, but we talked about asking you all to consider making your code of conduct stronger with the addition of punitive actions such as censures to deal with conflict of interest, et cetera, charter violations that may occur. So we, as a committee, talked about this fairly extensively, and this was where, well, what can you do? You know, we know what has happened over the last several years.
Right.
So we were sort of talking about it as a code of conduct within your rules, not as a, as a change to the charter. I'm just simply pointing that out. It's your all decision. I guess I would like to suggest that if you're going to add censure as a thing, as a tool, if you will, that I think it also needs to be addressed from within the county council also, so that you all have a tool, should one of you all, as you see it, rise to the level of some sort of charter violation, that you have the ability to censure one of your own members. Again, recalling that the town of Ocean City Council just did a censure action against one of its members. So all, on behalf of the committee, we would, we're, we didn't recommend this, but if you're going to go down the censure road, we did talk about it a lot, that there needs to be the tool within the council as well as this tool that you're recommending.
Would it be that the county executive could then censure?
No, well, sorry.
It just seems like if this needs to be, if we're going to do it, it's got to be across the board, all elected.
And not only a tool, but that document has to have teeth.
That's my concern, too. I'm all for, because I lived through it like everyone else here did for the most part.
We saw it.
And we recognize the damage that we felt was being done.
And we saw it, too, with all, yeah, we were following.
And the one thing was, was what I think we emphasized every game, we need something that has teeth, something that has teeth. Unfortunately, censoring, I'm afraid, doesn't have teeth. I just don't think it does.
It's like a vote of no confidence.
Yeah, but it's not going to accomplish anything.
That's all it is.
And I think it's just going to create another embarrassing argument with, if you're going to do anything, we know we can go to the courts, we just have to go to the courts sooner, go to the judiciary sooner.
Yep, the writ of mandamus that we discussed last time.
Solve all this problem, very simple, one referendum.
Yes, well, you can put that on, Joe, you can make that recommendation, but I'm not, I don't think censoring, in order to, to, you know, create one more item on the ballot, I don't think this is going to be worth the squeeze, in my opinion.
You're saying you just leave it alone?
Take it out.
History can repeat itself.
Do you think censoring is going to make any difference to...
Oh, I don't know, no, I'm not, I'm not endorsing it, I didn't mean it, I'm just saying what we can afford could happen again.
Thing is, if you're going to do it, you got to put something in it, what you can do to them, and that's the problem we ran into the previous years. We could sit up there and say, this person did this wrong, and they sit there and go, so what are you going to do to me? And that's what this is saying. If you're not going to do anything to them, why put it in there? If you're not going to do anything, censor them, suspend them, whatever, what are you going to do?
You know, you get, you get back to the fact of that position as a council position is elected by the people.
And even if we censured him, even if we put in the charter that we, with a super majority, we could kick him out of office, it's still going to go to the judiciary, he's going to appeal it, right, Paul?
Yeah, yeah. To me, the route, either way, whether it's the council that violates the charter or the executive violates the charter, the route is to a court for a writ of mandamus, where, you know, one body is asking that the other body either stop doing something or do something that they should be doing.
Yeah, but...
That's courtroom.
But unfortunately, the courts also got a history of saying, they don't like, I'm not going to deal with that, it's your problem, and they kick it right back to you.
We know that, too.
Well, my only comment is, the, I'm not so much for or against or whatever, but just going back to our history and the whole issue that we previously had, the big problem was there was nothing in the charter that addresses the issue. If the county executive chooses to ignore their charter, it's just going to do like whatever, then there's nothing in the charter that addresses that, so if we leave it the same, there's still nothing in the charter. I mean, you can impeach the president of the United States.
Yeah.
We don't have anything in our charter that says you can impeach the county executive.
Yeah, that's, that's the whole deal. There's only really three ways to address an elected official, and that's either impeachment, mandamus to make them do what they are supposed to be doing, or stop doing what they are doing, or if it involves finances, you have their purse string and they can't legally spend anything that hasn't been approved, so, but then again, if they spend it anyway, then you're back to mandamus again, so.
There is a fourth way.
What's the fourth one?
He said what the fourth was.
So I get it that we're talking about censure, and I a hundred percent understand what Bill's saying, but we're not proposing that the council has the authority to impeach the executive. I mean, you can do that in local government, but that's not part of what, I don't know, what, what do we want to do? I don't think this, this just seems to be a feel-good measure that's not going to accomplish a lot. We can say we censure him, what are you accomplishing?
Well, we, if I may, on behalf of the committee, we talked about that at fairly good length, and while we understand at the end of the day, a censure is what it is, it's, if you will, a non-binding thing, it, it is at least something, both within, again, should you all have a time to censure one of your individual members or the county executive. It does, where we were frustrated was that, just like you all, we were acknowledging that there were likely charter violations that had occurred, and like you all, we were like, well, what can we do? So this is, it's not nothing, I get that. It's also not, not a whole bunch of teeth behind it, but if you're a member of the public and you pick up the newspaper or social media that night, that next day, and you see that one of your members has been censured by the other six members, or that a county executive, he or she, has been censured for repeated violations of the charter, the only reason I know that an Ocean City Council person was censured is because I read about it.
In the news.
So it at least says as a body that something has happened here, this is the tool at our disposal, and we think it's serious enough that we are censuring, again, one of our individual members, or we're censuring the county executive, whomever he or she might be.
You're right on all those aspects, but, but what happens in the interim, that just makes it, that person harder to work with between the two bodies. You got that problem?
Yep, you do.
It's all political, right, we are all within...
They didn't like you before, now they hate you, you know?
Yep, valid point.
But that's going to happen anyhow.
Yeah.
If you're to that point, it's already...
Relations had soured pretty big, or even without a censure, if you will.
I wish we had some type of documentation that gave us more authority, but I don't say it, I don't, I don't see the authority to...
You all might have addressed this, I mean, I'm one of these people, I'm, I'm not creative, but I can copy what works somewhere else.
Yeah.
So the other counties that have the executive forms of government, do they have mechanisms in their charters?
I don't think they have removals.
Okay.
Now, removals for those reasons that are already in the charter, but not for...
Or violating the charter.
No.
There's been some county executives removed, but it's been through the court.
Yeah.
So do we keep section B in or remove it?
I think based on that answer, I'm, I'm pretty indifferent whether we keep it or not.
Joe, what are you going to do?
I'd say keep it in, I mean, you need, you need something, you need something.
Yeah, just like he said, if you even just censor it, at least you draw the public attention that something's going wrong.
Yeah, I can do it.
I can do that. I hope it warrants enough to justify another issue on the ballot.
Well, and again, I will remind you that we were suggesting that you do this through, you know, kind of code of conduct rules of council, as opposed to putting it as a, as a measure, as an official charter review. We did not make this...
I think the code of conduct is to deal with the county council and county council issues. I think if you're going to talk about the executive, he couldn't care less about our code of conduct, all due respect there.
Now, do you...
Getting back to A real quick, I had made a note some time back as to whether or not, because I thought it was very vague, it talks about, maybe, a county executive may be removed from office, et cetera, et cetera, but there were no primers in place to define it more clearly. Could we add any terminology in there that would require some type of cognitive assessment?
Like a doctor's report?
Does it say doctors in there?
No.
No.
So there's really nothing that says, this guy's not doing his job, or this girl's not doing her job?
Let's just say, it says physical or mental disability, and I don't think that's a decision that a council would make. I think you would need a third party, probably a medical statement that.
But being, being a personal issue, how do we have the authority to send a doctor to a, I mean, they can lock the door and say, we're not going to do this. So we have to have something, Mr. Wilber, that says they're required to take a cognitive test or something to that effect, right?
We did look at some other counties on that, and their language is very similar to what we currently have, there isn't anything really spelled out.
And I think it's a drug, I mean, if, for example, if you made that decision, you're saying it's based on their physical disability to perform the duties, you know, because the person's in a long-term care facility due to a terminally illness or something like that, but they haven't relinquished their duties, well, I think that's pretty clear, and if they think it's different, well, they can appeal it.
Right.
You know, if they think it's otherwise, but it, which is in almost any case, I think it's pretty...
Say, let's say this...
I'm not sure that's a can of worms we want, we want to...
Yeah, and, you know, you all, we had this circumstance, and the council showed great empathy toward what, you know, Mr. Culver, who was in declining health, and we kind of, sort of knew what that outcome was going to be, and so you all could have invoked this, but, you know, your decency and, you didn't, and I think, you know, I think it's, we, we thought that it was there, it says enough, and again, we came as close to invoking four oh eight A, or this body certainly could have, and you all made that decision not to, and there, there's humanity in that, and so we thought it sort of stood as okay as it was.
So we're going to add B and leave it as is, is that right?
B? I thought we'd already voted on it.
I'm saying, what I'm saying, as far as section four oh eight is concerned, does anybody want to see any adjustments to A or not?
No, not to A.
A.
But the only question to B, getting back to my earlier comment, where we kind of started, is, does B need to say...
Five members.
By five members of the county council.
Yeah, we're in agreement then.
And to just finish the circle, and it would not be in this section, it would be back in the county council section, do you want to have a censure section that would be internal to the council?
I would say yes, but then that comes back to...
Well, I, on balance, I would, the Charter Review Committee would certainly, if go, if you're going to have this tool available from the council to the executive, it's only, thank you, Joe, it's only fair that...
I think fine, I mean, right, if a county member's doing the same thing.
That's right. If you're going to do for one, you know, you should do for both.
Can you put that in as one question on the ballot, you think?
I think there are two different articles, because county council is the previous article, so it would probably have to be...
I understand, I'm just trying to figure how to...
Yep.
Yeah, I think you would have to add a whole new section, because I looked at it and I couldn't see where it would fit in any of the existing.
Yep.
Never wanting to predict what the public would do, I think the public would look at this and go, yeah, that's a good tool, knowing what has been going on, that's all.
Hopefully this could blow up.
Yeah.
Are you okay with this?
Mm-hmm.
So the next item, as I see it, is in section four twelve, am I right, to remove prior to assuming the duties of the office and replace it with, within six months of assuming the duties?
On four twelve, actually, I think we need to back up to four oh nine, which is forfeiture of office by the county executive, looks like there was some discussion on that, and I think we need to make it consistent with two oh two D, and I think...
Two oh two D was qualification.
Yeah, and I think, Mr. Wilber, you just made two oh two D consistent.
Consistent, right. The two oh two and four oh nine should be the same.
If we go back to...
Felony or a crime involving moral perpetuity.
So they're the same, but in two different sections?
Right.
Do we need two sections?
One's for the county executive, one's for the county council.
Yeah, one's council, one's exec, kind of like what the censure thing is.
Show you what two oh two D will look like. There you go. You see where he's got it underlined felony or crime involving moral perpetude.
Right.
So then section four twelve, four thirteen, four fourteen, you agreed with the recommendation of the Charter Review Committee, so we're looking at section five oh two C, and let's go to that.
So we are saying that we've already agreed to four twelve and four thirteen?
Yes, there was consensus for the recommendation of the Charter Review Committee.
I thought that on four fourteen, that we kind of missed the point, because, because we're talking about notifying the council within a certain period of time, but I thought that our, our issue was the continuing extension of the ninety days in perpetuity.
All right, so you want to go back, look at...
That's B. Is that what you're referring to, B?
Yes, we came into a situation where there wasn't a proper appointment.
B is in boy.
Oh, thank you.
Fine with that, I didn't have any notes on that, I had notes on D.
As in dog.
So maybe...
The recommendation, though, from the Charter Review Committee was to remove prior to assuming duties of the office and replace it within six months of assuming the duties, so we didn't touch on the ninety days.
Right, understood.
Okay.
All right, we'll, we'll leave it as it is, I mean, it says what it says, it can't exceed ninety days except by council approval, okay? Leave it alone.
So we're ready to move on to five oh two C?
Yes. Five oh two C, reference to, to state, except that no such suspension or removal may be already included, but not limited to those protected classes, they call, this was, is this like housekeeping?
This is updating, you might say, to current law, if you will.
Yeah, housekeeping.
Okay. Everybody over that?
It also keeps us from having the changes again, and some other point, if we're just simply...
Yeah, this is nice general language, right.
And then five oh three...
So is everyone okay with that, five oh two?
Everybody okay with five oh two?
Okay.
Five oh three, this is putting the, I'm assuming this is putting the regional, the airport as a department head.
Yeah, we're making airport a department level.
Okay.
It would be called Department Aviation.
Right.
And I wanted to mention to everyone that the local management board is also under here, and that is some of our county, other counties have it under the health department, other counties have it as a separate organization, we are unique to having this under our county government, so, something we want to look at. We talk, Wycomico County is unique to having this under our county government.
And I know it's been said from day one, why is the management board a department? I get it.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not the same in other counties.
Saying other counties have a department that's...
Other counties have, either falls under the health department, or it would fall under the social, social services administration, or it falls under a completely separate nonprofit entity.
Okay. It's, you know, it's driven by state law, these local management boards.
Yeah, so, I mean, if we want to keep this under our county government, does it, I guess it's a question for the county, acting county executive, if he thinks that...
What does everyone think about that?
Well, is it or is it not under the local government? I know even ours has profits and other things that are part of the local management board, but you're, you're saying we're like the only one that has it under their government?
The only one has it under their government, as a department head government.
But you're saying it's controlled. Law, then it has to be under the government.
Local management boards, what's in my mind is they're creatures of state law.
They are, for a county to have one, but not to fall under county government.
So they're kind of, you're saying the local management board is kind of like the health department?
Yes.
Or is it the local, or is it the local government just more passing the responsibilities on to, like, the health department, or...
It's a little bit different, because the county executive appoints the director of the local management board, he doesn't appoint a director of the health department, so we do have control pretty much over the local management board, they get their, their grants, they have to bring them to us to get them approved, so they're under us, so to put, you can't put them under the health department, because the health department, we don't have no control over them.
In other counties, they, they allocate those responsibilities to different entities within the county, or it goes to a nonprofit that oversees it. So they're county-specific, but they either do, they're under the health department, they're under a separate nonprofit, it's very rare that a local management board would be a director, would be an entity within the government.
That's the way it's set up. Who will be, who will pick the director of the local management board, then?
We're going to have to look at other counties and see how they do it.
I think that's, you're creating a headache, because everything they do has to come through the council.
That's how we have it set up, but...
That's the way it is set up.
Okay, in Wycomico County, that's what I'm saying, do we want to continue that, as other counties don't have it structured that way?
I think, I agree with you a hundred percent, I'd like to see it moved, but I think it's a really heavy lift.
Uh-huh.
And I think it's something we're going to have to look at possibly doing in concert with the executive branch, because it's a budgeting issue, it's not a charter amendment.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure if we're there yet.
It's a whole different...
It is, just something to note.
Since it's listed in the charter, though, it would be a charter amendment, if you were to, in the future, want to remove that from the government, you would have to amend your charter.
And we'd have to plan it, I think, a year out with the executive branch on how it's going to be, under whose authority it would be replaced, where it would be, how it would be funded.
Yep.
Yeah, it's more than a charter amendment.
Yeah, the Charter Review Committee didn't look at this.
Yeah, I'm just bringing it up now, I know that's actually the charter.
Yeah, I agree with you, I just think, I don't think it is...
On the radar, yeah, I don't think we're going to, we want to add anything to this.
Okay. So with that in mind, we did say it was okay with the airport, the next issue is five oh four, to remove the word substantial from five oh four A, it says, under a plan of reorganization in the event the county executive deems substantial reorganization with the executive branch. Personally, I don't think this warrants a charter, a charter amendment, I know it passed unanimously, but we're going to have twenty now.
Nobody on the Charter Review Committee is going to lose any sleep over five oh four.
Substantial.
Substantial, yes.
You want to just X that?
Right with that, leave it alone, leave it alone. All right, if I don't hear a yeah or no, we're moving on. Five oh five was to remove the last section, five oh five A.
And that was because no other department head is listed in this way, if I'm recalling correctly.
It's more of a housekeeping thing.
Five oh five, five oh six. Some redundancy, right?
Right, that's correct.
Yes. It was housekeeping.
Yep.
Okay, so five oh five and five oh six is just removing sentences that were redundant.
It's housekeeping, we have to put it on the ballot?
Yeah.
It's a change to the charter.
Let me ask that question, too, Mr. Dunn. It's a change, yeah.
Number five oh seven A.
There was a consensus for that recommendation, so it would be five oh eight.
507. 507A was a recommendation to, for it to read, the county attorney shall serve at the pleasure of the county executive. Here it. I put down there, I didn't like that.
Do you want to go back and look at it?
507A? Yeah.
You have notes that we had consensus on that?
No, that was, I think that was.
Yeah, with something else.
Were we agreed with the, you know, it says, or didn't we, we agreed with?
Did you agree with the recommendation of the Charter Review Committee?
I was trying to rethink that, why? So what's happening here is that you are removing the county attorney from the authority of the council.
That's, that's correct.
So you're, you're getting rid of that hybrid role.
That we think, like with all department heads, if you will, that the county attorney should be appointed and serve at the pleasure of the county executive. Not at the pleasure of the county executive and the council.
So we're more literally securing the authority of a county attorney, the county council attorney as our attorney. All right, everybody okay with that? Seems like, all right.
Although the county attorney's job doesn't change.
Yeah, so he would still review our contracts and still do work as requested.
And a big run-in with the exec and the council and the county attorney was basically working for exec could be an issue, but unlikely.
I'll tell you, there's, there could come a time where we need. All right, leave it alone.
Still hot in here.
Where are we next, 601? Am I right?
No, I believe you need to look at 508.
Citizen.
Citizens Advisory Boards? Yeah, the council wanted to be able to have the option to appoint an advisory board ourselves. Anybody give me an example as to why we wanted to do that? I mean, we did form the Animal Ordinance Committee. What is the difference in the role of an ordinance, of creating a committee, which we're allowed to do, right?
Well, I think that's.
An advisory board?
Yeah, I think Councilman McCain actually brought up last time that the provision that I had thought prohibited the council from creating a committee mentions longstanding committees. I think the, the council has received requests before, for example, to form a homeless committee, to, you know, a committee to look at the homeless population. And we've always looked at the county executive's office, because at least I was under the impression that we could not form committees. This would make it crystal clear that we could. I think if council's creating it, we would have to provide it.
So is, is it that important for us to give the council some authority to create a board as opposed to just do committees like we have in the past? What, what reason does the council think that we would need to have the authority to create a board?
I mean, I'm not sure how appropriate this is, but my take on that is, I'm not sure that rises to, once again, with so many charter amendments we're going to have. But there's still, if we, if there was something we felt we needed to have a committee, which we can call them whatever, it could be a work group, you might not be calling it an advisory committee. We want a work group on solar legislation, or whatever, we want to appoint people. You know, I'm not sure if this is, we can or can't. I mean, it's a little bit of, I guess that state, taking the position is better to ask forgiveness and permission, I guess, you know? But, I don't know, yeah, I'm not sure if it rises to a charter, charter amendment level.
The other part of that is, if, as a council, when we want, say we want to do, okay, we'll go back to the poultry legislation, we'll go back to that. We called on numerous people to come in front of us and have input.
We can do that all day long.
So we've, we've already been doing it, we just didn't put a committee together that we paid, or that we put a chair in charge of.
We could have easily done that.
Yeah, but, no, we can't do that.
Put a work group together.
Anyway, that's not, we.
What was your group?
Study group.
Take on that light.
Our group, this was really about good governance for us, meaning if there's a significant issue facing the county, let's use homelessness as an example, that our thought was that the county council and the county executive should understand that there's a significant issue facing the county, and let's put together a citizens advisory board. So for us, it was really a, an example that the communication, good governance, that if there's an identifiable problem, let's have the council and the county executive come together and appoint a board, or what have you, to address the problem. So that's why we didn't really make any recommendations, fell under communication and good governance.
Which is kind of what it is now. I mean, we should be going to the executive saying, we need.
Correct, and vice versa.
Major issue, we need an advisory committee on this.
That's right.
So.
Appoint one.
Okay, so, things as they are now, we think are good enough, right? Satisfactory, so we can strike this recommendation for B. Everybody good?
Sorry.
Yeah. I put a big X on it.
Done, way ahead of us, okay.
So 601A?
601A. Is this the one that sends the personnel system back to the executive branch?
It is. Yeah, I think it, it has the executive making a recommendation to the council, which the council then would have to pass a resolution to implement.
I don't think we should, I mean, we changed that, and I just, I think we, it mucks up the whole system. I don't like it, I don't think we should be involved in the HR system, or the PR, in the, in the.
You would be involved, but it would be initiated by the county executive for HR purposes. That was our thought, there's 450 people who work for the county, better that they report to the executive branch of government, was where our thinking was.
Is that okay with everyone? Is that all right? Okay. 601B?
601B, there was a consensus for the Charter Review Committee's recommendation. And then 609A, there was a consensus to lead that as currently written. So we're looking at 609B.
On 609B.
So this is saying that if the county executive were also the one to pick up teaching a class at SU, they couldn't do that?
Mrs. Ackley, I think what we were attempting to do was, it, it says, other than the county executive, and we were trying to say, the rule has to apply to the county executive as well as the other members of, whatever the rule is.
Apply to every.
That's right, just making it uniform.
Yeah, I see what you're saying, Mike, but if you strike other than, if I'm reading, if I'm reading that right, then now you're saying, because you're striking other than, yeah, the county executive's got to, but also members of the county council would be full.
You're saying that the county council would have to be full-time.
Right, have to vote their entire time.
We're not trying to say that, so let's walk through this.
That's, right, you're not trying to say that, but it's, if you just strike those two words, I think we have just said that.
I think it's, I think we're trying to, as it is, it says that the county executive cannot have, full-time is required.
And it also reads, now I'm kind of catching up, during the official working hours.
Yeah, I was going to question.
So as I view it, your official work, you know, your official working hours are when you are meeting, or, you know, on a commission, or.
Your meeting's a month.
Yeah. But those would be your, quote, official hours.
It makes it sound like.
I think you just, I think what you want to eliminate is the county executive. It should read, all officers and employees in the executive or legislative branches, other than members of the county council, the county attorney and assistant county attorney. Because all officers and employees in the executive or legislative branch need to be full-time, except for the members of the council, the attorney, and the assistant county attorneys.
So you're moving the other than down to in front of members of the county council?
Exactly.
But when you look at it, like Mr. Dunn mentioned, the, the working hours, it, somebody that doesn't know could read that and make it look like the county council and the attorney has to be here full-time.
That's just the opposite. I think you just remove the word county executive, just say, all officers and employees in the executive or legislative branches, other than members of the council, attorney, and the assistant attorney.
So you're striking some of that?
Yeah, because right now it says, other than the county executive, well, county executive can't be part-time, county executive has to be full-time.
And not, not to try to convolute this, but kind of to Nicole's point, so your county executive teaching a part-time class at SU.
We would want that to be allowed.
Right. But would this, you know, could somebody make a point, oh, well, they can't do that.
We have other employees that travel and teach.
The difference in that, and the county executive running a popcorn stand.
I think it says during official working, during the official working hours, if, if we said the executive was a eight to 4:30 job, and.
We set that parameter, though.
But he doesn't punch a clock.
24/7 job, right?
Yeah, that's the thing, he doesn't punch a clock, right, he doesn't, there's nothing in the charter defines. He works from, you know, eight to four, five days a week, or something like that, you know, it just kind of says it's full-time.
And we all know that, we saw the executive, and we do it ourselves, we're 24 hours a day doing something. Tonight, we're going to leave here and go to the County Firemen's Association meeting. Should you put the, the time 40 hours a week, Monday through Friday, or what? The county executive is going to put a lot more than 40 hours in.
It says full-time, I guess, you know, it's left to interpretation.
I think the public.
40 hours, right? Is a full-time place considered 40 hour, 40?
Seven and a half.
Seven and a half hours a week.
Right.
Right now, the way it's written in here, it just says the county executive, coming for 20 hours if they want to do. So, I turn with that, council doesn't have to, county attorney and the assistant county attorney doesn't have to, but the county executive needs to be, this is the contract that the county has with the executive, this one section that says, hey, you're going to have to be full-time.
Laura might have just fixed it, did you, did you type that, or?
I typed it.
Right.
Take out the county executive.
Right, you just take out county executive.
Right.
And now it just says, other than members of the county council, county attorney, and assistant county attorney.
Right, that would have to be the amendment.
So basically, this is, as she just has that now, that means.
Laura and I made the same changes.
County executive's full-time.
A little history, when it was being touted for a county executive, it was being touted as if they, the county needed a full-time manager.
Yeah.
Right.
And that's what helped sell, sell, sell the program.
That's why the charter says, full-time required.
So we will, we're okay with making the amendment to the charter that removes the county executive's name in this section?
Like you said, move the other than down.
Well, it just, yeah, it just kind of slides over to member, yeah, when you remove the county executive, everything else is in place.
Yep.
Okay. Is that all right?
I'm good.
It's still going to say official working hours.
That's okay, I mean, it's all right.
I think that's fine, too.
Okay.
So we know what it is, but the public's going to interpret it different.
How are you going to know what's, what to say about full-time? You, you, you know, that's tough, full-time could be noon to, noon to seven, or eight to four, or.
That's what I was trying to say.
It's, it's.
Laura used to come in really early, he was here like six.
I mean, you, you either got to do one or two things, you either got to set an hourly, hourly time, or you got to say they can't receive compensation from some other source. That's.
Official working hours for the county are considered to be what, 8:30 to four?
Is that defined anywhere?
It depends on the employee, of course, you know, what role they're serving.
Sheriff, you know, they work, they work, shift work, you know.
But most employees in this building, it's eight to five.
Eight to five.
We don't want to get in trying to set.
No.
Times, et cetera, I mean, I think it's fine, like, I just, once it gets simple, it's better, I just think doing, just like we got it now, works. It's saying it's a full-time position.
Yeah, I, I just don't want someone in the public to argue that they can't teach at Warwick, or at Salisbury University.
They could do that, you can work a full-time job and teach a night class, that's not interfering with your full-time job.
But I've heard people argue that he shouldn't be doing anything, they think he's got to be there 24/7.
This establishes a bare minimum that says that the executive has to be a full-time employee.
It'll put the burden.
Because right now, it says he doesn't.
It'll put the burden on the exec, if he wants to teach a class and it's at 3 o'clock, he's going to have to say, yeah, but I'm here at 9 o'clock after I come back, but it puts a burden on him at that.
His hours are flexible.
Good. All right, so we'll strike that, we'll strike the county executive first.
So 704, 705, 710, and 712 were recommendations from bond council, and everyone agreed to make those recommendations. So we're moving to 706B.
706B.
You say get rid of the revenue cap.
Stop, Bill, stop, you said it right now, you're done.
What was that? What, what is there we need to discuss about 706?
I remember it very well.
So I'm assuming we are done, right? We're done with that? So how, so we have to do like a quick change thing here, how, how do we grasp exactly? We've got to re-review now all the, all the changes we made, and then make a final decision today? Laura?
No, you don't have to make a final decision today. So I'm just kind of looking at this list real quick, so you guys don't want to talk about 706B, you're going to leave that as is, just for clarification.
706E?
B. B.
Yeah.
Revenue cap.
I thought.
I just want to make sure.
Yeah, that wasn't, that wasn't, that wasn't a recommendation.
Okay.
We didn't touch that.
They didn't touch it.
We know better, right? We know better now.
We didn't touch that.
So if we can.
Somebody did.
That's the, that's section, that's what he built, section B.
It's always worth pointing out, Mr. Holloway was there that night when we announced that we weren't going to touch it, he almost fell out, I could see it from the, we had to take time out, Mr. Holloway, who's fallen over in his chair.
See if my CPR card's valid or not.
That's why we made sure Josh wasn't here today, Bill.
So we want to just leave that one as written?
Yes.
Okay.
Speaking of.
No, hold on a minute, we really got, we got to get.
If you want to wrap it up.
How many do we have right now?
We only have a couple more left on the list.
Why was that even in there?
What do we have on the list?
You've got 1101, which you're going into definitions. This was to add the definition of local governing body. Again, there was discussion, but there was not a consensus taken as to what to do.
Local governing body is the council and the executive.
Mr. Wilbur, do you think there is a need for us to make any changes on 1101 legally?
I, I think that was a clarification issue, that local governing body, to make it clear, it's a, we have a two-branch government, it was the executive and the council. And I think when our discussions, is any act required by the county should be initiated by the county executive, then referred to county council for confirmation, brought action by the county executive. It's, it's a defining statement about what that, when we see that in state or federal law, that's what it's going to mean, any act has to occur that way.
The reason I ask you is because, no different than, I think, with what we deferred to Lindsey Rader on theirs.
Right.
The questions, I think we need to get a legal opinion on whether this is. The questions. I think we need to get a legal opinion on whether this is compromising or not compromising, is the way it's currently phrased, whether it needs to be changed.
It's not currently in our charter at all. This language actually came from Anarundel County. And that was.
I would say whether it needs to be added or not then.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a clarifier. Yeah.
There were concerns in the past that council was kind of excluded from certain actions when it mentioned local governing body, and this would clarify that we should be involved.
So if it says to add number fifteen to state the words county commissioners shall refer to county council, are you saying there's too many references to county commissioners? That we're trying to correct it all in one?
I think that was a reference to the prior charter before the executive had commissioner.
But there are so many references to commissioners that instead of correcting all of those, we just changed it, we just clear, more clearly defined the commissioners.
Right. I, I don't think this charter that we have now has the word commissioner in it. I haven't recent, I haven't word searched it, but I can't say that I've seen commissioner.
Because when I'm reading here, it says to add number fifteen to state the words county commissioners shall refer to county council.
So I seem to recall seeing the word commissioner, but as I'm looking in section eleven now, every reference says county council. So I, we know that we saw the word commissioner somewhere. And again, this was just a housekeeping thing since we're not county commissioners.
I see one right now in section eleven oh one. It says, it does say it, uh, number five. And I just did a search. It says all ordinance and resolutions of the county commissioners not hereby and hereafter amended.
Yeah, I knew I'd seen one.
And section twelve oh one talks about, it uses the word commissioner.
Gosh, twelve oh one does it too. Oh my god.
And it might be in the county code as well. So I mean, adding it to the charter as a definition just clarifies.
It's all over the place. Twelve oh three, twelve oh four.
Yeah, county commissioners.
So if you just stick at one place saying commissioner means council, whatever, we don't have to make five.
All right.
So we charter.
Can I ask, did Wycomco formerly have commissioners before the charter?
Before the charter.
No, we were actually council before, before we became legislative executive. We were still a council.
No, not that, before the charter, the original charter, because lots of there are, if, if we were a commissioned county.
I thought we were.
Then this is just saying, all those things that were passed in years passed by the commissioners are still in place unless it's been changed.
Right.
I think, when Tony Sarbanes was in office, they were, weren't they a council?
I think they were.
Yeah, it was two thousand and two, but I think he's saying way past that.
Well, when we changed the charter to allow for legislative legislation, they kind of did a sloppy job. This commissioner should have been changed.
No, I don't, what I'm saying is, I think what it's saying is, you know, if, if, if the Whigs passed something in seventeen hundred, it hasn't been changed, it's still a law. This is saying that the commissioners passed something before there was a charter that made the council.
Yeah.
Unless the council changes it. But I don't know if we were ever a commissioned.
Yeah, that's, I don't know either without.
I think we were.
Without looking.
It makes sense if we were, but it was.
I don't know.
But you can still handle that through definition, right, Paul? I mean, you can still say, commission refers to former commission or council members, including present.
Right.
Or something to that effect. So it's all encompassing.
Right. And what about the second, the second item in eleven oh one, Mr. Wilbur, to add a definition for local governing body?
I mean, I'm okay with what's written there. The idea is just when it states that in federal or state law, who does it involve? Does it involve both bodies or just one body? Clears up any confusion.
Right. And, and honestly, you tell me, I think this, both of these changes could be put on the ballot is one question because it is in definitions.
Oh, I agree with that.
And it is a housekeeping measure. I don't think anyone's going to have any objection to one and not the other.
No.
All right, so that's.
Combine them.
Yeah, combine them and that's kind of no blood.
Yeah, that's would be my thought, too.
Everybody okay with that? Eleven oh one, two, three, four, five. We still have five left. Everybody okay? Okay, all right. Is that it?
That's the end.
How many changes do we have?
I, I suggest that you let me update our list.
Thank you.
And then maybe you can look at it and prioritize which ones you actually want to see on the ballot.
All right, Joe, yeah.
I, I, I do have something to say. Mike, thank you for all the hard work you did.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And your committee. Now, let me ask you.
Yeah.
In your opinion, wasn't most of that work centered around the reason, centered around the fact that we had a county executive form of government?
I don't.
And, and the problems we had between the two bodies. I'll put it that way.
How about if I answer it this way? There's very little question that, an underlying and recurring theme that we set out from meeting one was to try and get to a better way for good governance because we had seen, all of us had seen and witnessed and been part of what we all thought was less than good governance. So.
We, we've had, we've had a county executive form of government since two thousand and six. And to say that it's been successful, I don't think would be correct.
Well, yeah, but why did we get a county form of government?
Well, I understand.
Those people said our council was it.
Well.
That just depends who you got in office at the time, whether it's council or.
Let him, let him finish.
Let me finish, Phil.
Yeah.
Then you can.
Hurry up, I got to go.
Let me finish, then you can interrupt me. How's that?
Yeah.
But anyway, so, so, you know, the first eight years, if they had been super successful, that county executive would have been elected to the third term.
Sure.
Okay, the second county executive, we had different issues. Most of what's happened in this charter review committee has taken place because of things that did happen. You know, Wycomco County is the smallest county to have an executive form of government in the state of Maryland. From eighteen sixty-seven, if we look up there, to two thousand and six, Wycomco County made out pretty well. Little snafus happening here and there. Now, I hear from a lot of constituents of why we even have an executive form of government.
Right.
Okay, now, it's our chance today, or when we have a full council sitting here, to let the citizens decide again if we want to, to change this form of government back.
Mr. Holloway, I will.
Now, that's.
No, I'll simply say that this question by the charter review committee was handled in the same way as the revenue cap question, meaning we felt that that decision went up, and I'll quote Doug Gosnell, our good friend, Sharp Town Mayor, Commissioner, he was vehement in that first meeting that I did not sign up to be part of this charter review committee to consider the question of getting rid of the office of county executive. That sort of, that sentiment then carried the day. So I'm not here to represent whether the idea is a good idea or a bad idea.
I'm not asking you to.
Yeah, no, I understand. That, I just wanted it to be clear that we did not address this question in the same way that we didn't address the revenue cap. We thought that if it, going down that road, that was a political consideration.
It's, it's created a lot of animosity. My biggest problem with it, and it's, well, two things. It was, it costs more, or it could cost more, it could cost less. But my biggest, my biggest problem, and it's been this way the whole time, is not the way the county executive treats people or the way the council treats people, but it's the way that people don't understand when somebody calls me or Bill or John, or Nicole or Larry or Ernie or Josh, and wants something done that we have no authority to get it done. That's, that's the biggest, one of the biggest problems. Excuse me. So that's, that's my, my point on it. That's, you know, it's, it's cost the county taxpayers money. It's, it can be ran, it was ran all those years fine as it was before. I mean, it wasn't broken. It may have needed to be repaired, but it wasn't completely broken. So, okay, Bill.
Well, my only comment to that is, well, that's not a topic that we're going to solve in two, we, we got to make a decision here by next, like, meeting, you know. That's something, I think that's a deep dive question. You know, you talk about advisory committees or something that's, you know, people should work on for a year.
It could be, it could be a one, it could be a one-sentence question on the referendum. It could, it's not that deep.
Yeah, well, I, I have no appetite for that. The, I mean, all the reasons, like, and I've heard you say it a million times about the revenue cap. Voters put it on, voters should take it off, but you won't touch the revenue cap. But, you know, the same logic with county executive. They, they put it on, they were the ones that wanted it, and they put it on. You know, at the end of the day, it's, you know, they put it on because, you know, of the people and the way they felt the county's being run as a council. So it's like, I think, you know, I just think it always gets back to, you, you, if you put good people in office, whether, whichever form of government you have, it'll run fine if everybody follows the charter and you put good people in. But I think it's way too big of a nut for, hell, yeah, I don't have an appetite to just, now just drop everything we just did and say, well, we're going to change the whole form of government.
It's, it's not dropping everything.
Yes, it is.
It's just adding something.
You're about, that'd be the biggest decision in twenty years in Wycomco County. We're going to make it, we're all of a sudden going to throw it on as a charter amendment. Like I say, they, you know, we had a whole charter review commission that they felt was too big of an issue to tackle at this point in time.
They didn't say it shouldn't be tackled. They said they didn't want to tackle it.
At this point.
No, we said we did not believe it was a question that was something we should be providing.
Correct, right, yeah, okay.
Something could be, could even be a strong question.
This could be put on the ballot in twenty-four.
Don, just trying to get clarification. Yes.
Yes.
Could be put on the ballot anytime.
I want to make sure it could be put on twenty-four. I didn't know if there are any restrictions as to how, when we could put it on based on the, based on the census.
Any election cycle.
You could have had it.
I just want to make sure. But, you know, to your point, Joe, I, I, I agree with what you're saying, but my concern about that is that I can't tell you how many times I thought, I don't know how the council before us, whether it was Tony Sarbanes or Phil Tillman or whomever, I don't understand how they managed all the departments and all the employees in addition to everything else that we have to do.
County manager.
I know the process, but I still thought, man, how the heck, I mean, in, in addition to everything we have to do now, then we'd have to have a report from a county administrator, council administrator that would come in and go over all the department heads and every single employee issue that we would have to be responsible for.
I just brought it up.
I, I'm, and I'm responding. I think it would be a little overwhelming.
Okay.
And I, I get what you're saying because I really question it too as to whether or not it's been an efficient form of government for us and a successful form of government for us. I think there's more strikes against than, than for. But on the other side, flip side of that, I don't think I'd want to wish upon this council the responsibility to oversee, directly oversight on the departments and the employees.
I, I wonder. On the ballot, would it, it wouldn't take place until, they would vote it in twenty twenty-two, and then it wouldn't take place until twenty twenty-six.
Yeah.
Probably so.
Just like going to the executive.
Yeah.
It's voted, but then.
Takes four years.
So it's not like, hey, you just got.
Two to four years later.
I'm going to be full time.
Could it be added in a form of like a straw poll, like the city did about dissolving their charter twenty-some years ago?
Yeah, I hate to say this, but I got a daughter's point, but.
Well, you should go.
We got, we got this.
This is just, I mean, this is not, this is just simply not.
We got it.
Eleventh hour topic.
But it's not been eleventh hour.
No, it's been discussed.
Before. I mean, you know.
I'm going to agree with you on that. So that would be, if, at the worst case, there'd be a three vote on that, which wouldn't work. Because I agree, I'd rather, if we're going to do this, I'd do it in twenty-four instead of twenty-two. I just feel we should.
Just give it sufficient time. There's, there's a lot to be discussed and talked.
Well, it can be done in twenty-four and then get ready for twenty, twenty-six.
See, Bill.
See you, Bill.
Hey.
All right, we got four votes. Let's.
Let's get this on the ballot.
On a less significant issue, you changed from, to a charter county in sixty-four. So that commissioner reference is probably the things that happened prior to sixty-four.
They were commissioners prior to that.
Yeah.
That I didn't find, but I think that's probably correct.
Do, do we need to define the, what is it, three forms of government in the state? Do, for our charter, should we define the three forms of government?
We don't have to.
Don't have to.
Don't have to state that, no.
Okay, so we are done with this for now.
For now.
So still have a quorum?
Get a list for us, okay? We barely have.
We'll, we'll generate a clean copy with all the deletions and the changes, and then you all can do your final cut.
And on the council action, I don't have a problem if you add more of a description there instead of a few words.
And, and speaking of Bill's comment about eleventh hour or whatever, every time I've brought this up, that's kind of been what everybody's said. It's, oh, you can't bring this up now. So I waited until the last to bring it up because they keep saying, oh, you can't bring it up now, when I brought it up before. So, anyway, so be it. Taxpayers just keep saving me money.
Valid as a non-binary question.
All right. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Michael?
Thank you all very much. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the budget recap session. We will attempt to recap as much as we can right now. If we, whatever we don't do now, I would honestly think we can do just in discussion when we approve the final budget itself. I don't see where there's that many issues that are out here that everybody's, has a problem with. As a budget recap, I hate to do this without a full council here, seven members. Yeah.
Do you want to schedule a special meeting?
Do we need to, that's what I want to do. Just very quickly, do you think there are really that many issues where we have to schedule a special meeting, or we can probably do an entire recap when we approve it as a legislative bill in discussion?
My only suggestion for, sorry, I broke in. I apologize.
Sorry.
My only suggestion is if there are changes that you guys want, us having the ability to create those changes in a, an appropriate amendment and not on the fly the night of the passage, makes life a lot easier for everybody that we make sure that it is done appropriately.
We can't send those in by mail or by email because we have to vote on them.
Yes, be.
So we have to do it next, next meeting.
Or have a special meeting.
And that's why I'm saying is, is if, if we have the availability of a special meeting to do this, to allow us to know so that we can write them between Paul and Andy, make sure we get them crafted in such a way that they are appropriate.
I agree. Have to have a special meeting.
Okay. Will you run down?
Let's have a special meeting. The one thing I would say is, one thing I would say is, two concerns of mine in, in supporting, I really think we need to consider from our discussion today, some type of supplementary payment for the health or environmental health specialist. I just really do.
Yeah.
I, I think it's at a critical juncture where it has to be resolved. If money doesn't solve the problem, we find out money doesn't solve the problem, but I think we should at least attempt that. That would require a grant. And I think in all honesty, I think the sixty thousand dollar number is way too low. A couple grand, I don't think that's going to make any difference in one way or the other for someone who's looking for a job. I think it has to be, I would say maybe even five thousand dollars where you're looking to, to make a supplement. So that would be about a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty thousand dollar grant based on Lori's math. She said sixty thousand for two, sixty thousand dollars for a two thousand dollar, and I think she said two, did she say two thousand dollar increase?
I don't, exactly.
That'd be a five thousand dollar increase. Ten thousand would be the one, the one twenty, I think.
You guys do the math, right? Because I'm not sure how many environmental health specialists she's talking. I can't remember what number she said, but.
Eleven point five.
I think we should, okay, so I think we should consider probably a five thousand dollar, looking at a five thousand dollar change there. And that's just me. Does anybody else?
Yeah, that's, the, the two that I had were, was what John just said. And then the other one was the grant for failing septic systems. I just wanted to, you make sure that you use that Chesapeake Bay Restoration Fund because if our county doesn't use that allocated amount by the state, we will lose it.
We will?
We will. We will.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
So we have money there. There's money in that fund that's not being used.
Hold on, hold on.
So...
Okay, thanks. They have money, and I know that she said that today, but do they have money?
They still have money, yes.
Okay.
So if we're creating another grant, that's...
Got it. Thank you. So I guess the question would be whether or not in your budget, John, because you were allocating this $350,000 and this $500,000 for septic, whether it would help to show it in your revenue side that it may be coming from this fund instead?
Well, I don't think they would funnel it to us on their grant side. This could be supplementary in addition if that grant run, if there's amount...
If it happens to...
To run out.
And of course, that's critical areas.
Yes, so that is...
You're not talking critical areas. You're talking...
We're talking creating our own.
No, Chesapeake, that, that fund, someone in, I mean, I could have applied for it where I live in West Side.
But you have to be, you have to be so many feet from critical areas.
But that's pretty much the entire county.
I don't know if it is.
I mean, anyone, you could apply for anywhere. Do you know of anyone who's applied and been denied?
I don't know the answer to the question.
It's priority, though, isn't it, based on a priority area?
It's a priority area.[1544.54]